March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting the Longview City Council. Tonight's prayer and pledge will be led by the representatives of the local chapter of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, which is the oldest intercollegiate historically African-American fraternity. Although it was initially formed by black men, it has been integrated since nineteen forty-five and has chapters internationally. Their mission is to develop leaders, promote brotherhood, and academic excellence while providing service and advocacy for their communities. Welcome. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, God of this world, God of this universe, God of my life, God, we thank you for another opportunity to join together at the group as in members of this organization. Hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thou will be done on earth as it is in heaven. God, we thank you for the continued grace and mercy upon us all, bestows individually and as a group, bestows those less fortunate that meet clothes, fed, sheltered, put the vision of this chamber to look over the complete city, not just individually precincts, but look at those who are less fortunate and plan the vision of this city for the next ten or fifteen years that we have seen and plan. These things, as in precious blood of Jesus' name, I pray, that you give us vision as a council and as a community, do thy will for the best of all of us. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service. We're here to citizen comment. Do you not have any cards who wish to speak at this time? We'll go to public safety update. We'll start with Chief Boone. Oh, no, I do have some cards. Never mind. They slipped up. Hold on.
Not yet, Chief Boone.
Not yet, chief. Hold on. I have one for comment only. I have one. Brian Sturdevent?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Brian Sturdevent. My address is eleven thirteen Pine Bluff Drive here in Longview. My wife and I have a house there we've been living in, and our problem is since they've started the road construction on Harrison Road and widening it out, the amount of runoff coming off the road. Before the construction, there was thirty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety gallons per inch of rain coming off the road. Now, there is one hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and nineteen gallons per inch of rain coming down the road, our creek that the road dumps onto, which has caused our cliff in our backyard to erode. We had about ten feet of backyard fall off a cliff, and now our chain link fence is just hanging in the air. We do have a problem. I know this is not a time to discuss it, but we just want to make the council aware that there is a problem, and now it's, we'd like to at some time come with a solution to stop the erosion so we don't lose our whole backyard and house. So, the house has been there seventy years, so it's nothing that just has been happening over time. It's just since they started the road construction and getting all this extra water down the creek, and we just wanted to let y'all know there is a problem. So.
Thank you, sir. We'll have someone from the city. Do anyone want to contact him?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. Another speaker card, Amanda Veezy.
My name is Amanda Veezy, ten fifteen McCann Road. I'm the founder and executive director of One Love Longview. The mission of our organization, for those of you who don't know, is to serve the underserved of our community. One Love Longview provides holistic care for the whole person, addressing the most basic human needs such as food insecurity, clothing and hygiene needs, medical and prescription care, mental health, in-house substance use treatment, eliminating barriers within the legal system, assisting with long-term placement, housing, and transportation, providing social services such as aiding and acquiring all forms of identifying information, job placement assistance, facilitating care coordination, and advocating for our clients to obtain resources for all qualifying services. While other agencies do provide a handful of each of these services, what sets One Love apart is that we offer all-inclusive support, addressing the needs of each client, based on an individualized care plan created in-house by the advocate and client themselves. We've removed the barrier of accessibility by providing it all under one roof. A large majority of our clients are not currently eligible for at other local organizations and agencies due to disabilities such as medical conditions that impact accessibility, sexual orientation, undiagnosed and/or untreated mental health conditions, legal barriers, lack of identifying documentation, and temporary or permanent bans. We rely on the partnership and financial backing of the community to sustain our mission, but a lack of support is prohibitive, and harassment by neighbors and city officials is unconscionable, detrimental, and unjust. Whereas other communities are embracing these protected classes of people, we are not progressing on these issues as a city, as a county, or as a community. Just like you and me, these humans have the right to move freely in public spaces without judgment or discrimination. We are here to plea with our community and leaders to help us eliminate barriers by implementing solution-driven conversations and approaches. We are requesting the amendment of city ordinances that harm this population rather than help them, such as modification of ordinances pertaining to camping to allow a protected tent community until a safe, small home community or more housing solutions can be constructed. We also request that the city build more strategically-placed public restrooms that can be accessible around the clock, remove hostile architecture like anti-homeless bench spikes, and add more city sidewalks to ensure safe travel. Please hear our plea for compassion and communication where this population is concerned. Until these solutions can be implemented, the voices we stand before you to represent have nowhere to simply exist. So, if not at One Love Longview, where would you have us have them stand? That's it.
Thank you. Now, we're to public safety update. Chief Boone.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Mr. McPhee. First, I want to start with our monthly stats from February. Our priority one calls, you'll see there, three minutes, eleven seconds was our average response time, so very, very proud of that. Calls for service for the month, we're just over forty-six hundred with our traffic stops just under three thousand for the month, and our DWI cases at thirty, and our crashes below that two-hundred mark at one hundred and seventy-six. On Saturday, March second, the Longview Ministerial Alliance came to the new police station and had their meeting there, and I was fortunate enough to be able to visit with them on the all the happenings of Longview Police Department, and then they prayed over the Longview Police Department at the end of my segment, so it was definitely great to have them out there with us. Also, on March eighth was International Women's Day, so we wanted to celebrate our women in law enforcement. There's just a picture of just a few of our ladies that wear the uniform, and also catch our podcast. That was actually some of our female officers that took part in that as well, so if you haven't heard it yet, go back and definitely listen to that. And then on March thirteenth, we had Yukon Coffee, Cop With a Cop, Coffee with a Cop, and that was with our par officers, and that was actually a good turnout, and we were kind of impressed with that, and we will definitely have some more of those pop up throughout the community in the months to come. And then the third, I believe it's the Third Annual Kite Festival sponsored by the Parks Department, went off great, and I'm sure that Chief Stillman has some pictures of some fire apparatus out there as well. As you can see, we had some kites that actually represent Longview PD there, and we were giving those away to the children and had a good team. Everything from our newest officers, you see the trainees there, one of them holding up that kite, to some of our more senior officers in that group, and definitely had an opportunity to show off some of our other equipment to the kids and the parents. And one of the greats of Longview PD, Johnny Lyons, he will be retiring, and he will have a party on March twenty-second at ten a.m., so that's open to the public as well. Please come out there and congratulate him on completing thirty-two years of service with Longview Police Department. He will definitely be missed by us. And to go along with women in law enforcement, we're highlighting Officer Payne there, working at her office, her vehicle, and again, please, if you want to make a difference, if you want to be something bigger than yourself, come out and join our team. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief Boone? Thank you, sir. Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on some occurrences in the fire department since our last meeting. I need to back up a little bit of mid-February, and I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about this with all the wildland focus that's been going on in the state of Texas. Several of our crews that participate with the TIFMS and the EMTF deployment teams, this is where we send people out across the state to go help in other jurisdictions, had the opportunity to do some training here locally over in Wood County. This is an annual process where we do a burn process for clearing out land to revitalize the timber industry up there where they harvest a lot of the pine trees, and this is a nine, ten thousand acre piece of property, and they allow us to come in and put on this week-long of training to do hands-on wildfire scenarios, dealing in the wildland environment, to better prepare our crews for those deployment opportunities like you're seeing out in West Texas right now. So, our crews got some excellent training out here. We're fortunate to have the kind of community that supports this degree of training so we can keep our people sharp. Fire extinguisher training. So, fire safety is a big thing in the fire department. We love being able to go out into the community and teach others. We had an opportunity to go out to Public Works and do a little refresher training on them of how to use a portable fire extinguisher. You know, anytime a small fire can be kept small and hopefully be put out altogether, it just lessens the impact of the damage and the danger of that event. So, I'd like to thank Public Works for allowing us and accommodating all of their employees to go through the portable fire extinguisher training, and we're certainly glad to do that, and we're happy to offer that to any other city departments. Christian Heritage School did us a solid. They have what's called an annual sponge day. It's where they give something back to the community, and they reached out wanting to paint some fire hydrants, and guess what? There's no shortage of fire hydrants that need painting in the city. So, we picked out an area out in the North Business Park, and those girls went out there, and they were full speed ahead. I mean, they got on the hydrants and knocked them out, and where that makes a difference to us is when you're trying to spot that hydrant at two o'clock in the morning with low light, low visibility, and you have that nice coat of fresh yellow paint on there, we can go right to it, get a hose hooked up to it, and take care of business. So, I want to thank Christian Heritage School for being willing to spend a little bit of time helping make our community better. Live fire training. So, right now, early in the year, we're taking the opportunity to do a ton of different types of training. This is another example of live fire, structural firefighter training, being the fact that our training field is still in a process of transition. We have neighbors out to the south of us in the Elderville community that welcome us to come use their training facility so that we can do this. Without them, we would be doing without, so I owe them a huge amount of gratitude for allowing our crews and accommodating us to come out and do these night evolutions. Doing training in the daytime and training in the nighttime, two different worlds that you're having to work in. When you're working above grade, working up on roofs in the low light conditions, it's a great opportunity to go out and do that degree of training. So, we want to thank the Elderville-Laporte Volunteer Fire Department for welcoming us at their facility. And as Chief Boone mentioned, we were grateful to be a part of the kite festival. Our crews had a great time interacting with all the kids and the people that were out there. We were fortunate enough to get the opportunity to rescue a kite from a tree. You can see in the picture there on your right, so we can add that to the list of things that we get out of trees now. So, I'm happy to report that the kite is in good shape, and the kid was happy, and he was back on track getting it back up in the air as soon as they rescued it, so good time. And, oh, I do want to put you on alert that we are expecting some severe weather, possibly tomorrow in our area, so I'd just like to ask that everybody kind of have their head on a swivel. They're predicting pretty high winds, pretty large hells, so just be cautious. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We've got a consent agenda. Any items council like to pull off for separate discussion?
J.
Item J. Anything else, council? Okay, Mr. Perdell, item J. Proceed.
Wouldn't this be into the renovations of the building itself?
It's a part of the renovations. It's the stuff we're doing before we start the renovations, yes.
So, does this money come out of the bond?
It does.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
One question. Does this building have that same system?
It runs off that same boiler there in that building. It supplies both of them, but this control will be just for that building.
So, the issues we've had in this building are still going to be with us?
There's still issues we're working through.
Okay.
We've done a lot of parts replacements, but yeah, there's still more to be done.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now to zoning, public hearing, consider application S twenty-four zero one. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a single-family dwelling in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for single-family dwellings within this zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Currently, there are two buildings on the property, and the applicant would like to convert them back to residential. The buildings previously have housed several different uses, including but not limited to like a flower shop, music shop, clothing store, and most recently, a church. Mobberly is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by the city of Longview, and this development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Ms. Choi. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion is our second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a public hearing to consider application Z twenty-four zero one. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located here on the northwest corner of Holly Burke Drive and Ridgewood Drive from townhome zoning to single-family six zoning district. Staff does find the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I have Mr. Brent Conaway here for questions. If necessary, any questions of Ms. Choi or Ms. Conaway?
Mayor, was this property not rezoned recently?
Yes, sir. It was recently rezoned from SF four, single-family floor, to townhome zoning district, but now it's under contract, and a new buyer would like to rezone it to single-family six.
Six.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If there's no questions, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to election item, considering ordinance designating polling times and locations for the May fourth, twenty twenty-four general election for mayor in districts one and two. Ms. Shepherd, take it from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council, and Mr. McPhee. Tonight, we're asking for approval for us to go into contract with Gregg and Harrison Counties for the May fourth election. This will also allow for a joint agreement with the school districts, which will set the time, the locations, and the dates for those early voting locations and for our election day. Longview and Gregg County residents, you'll see the dates here. There are three voting locations will be Longview City Hall, Broad and Rec Center, and Spring Hill Junior High School. And our election day will have six voting locations, and that'll be for Spring Hill School District, for the city of Longview, and also Longview School District. We move on to Harrison County, and that's with about fourteen hundred voters in Harrison County. Hallsville is also having an election, so we'll have one voting location, which will be at Woodland Hills Baptist Church. That will be for early voting, no Saturday voting in Harrison County. But we will have the final election day, which is May fourth. That is a Saturday, and that will be at Woodland Hills as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Shepherd?
No more of the duty center looking for community to stay in the area.
There is none.
If there's no question?
I have a question. It's not really a question, but it's an observation. I noticed in this just most recent election that didn't really involve us, that there were no distance markers for campaigning, and I remember before, we used to kind of have them out there that saying, hey, no campaigning past this mark.
One hundred feet, yes.
Yes.
We will have those available.
Okay. We will have those during this election.
We will.
Okay.
We do it right, Ray.
I guess you do, don't you, Mayor Mack?
Thanks to the counties.
We had nothing to do with those other elections.
So, who he says don't do it right?
I don't know. It wasn't us.
Okay. Any other questions?
If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. We're now at an action item, considered resolution supporting and approving certain improvements to Teague Park, and authorize the city manager or the city manager's desire to negotiate and execute agreements with Gregg County and our lead co-institute to obtaining support for those improvements. Council, as you all know, we have discussed Teague Park many times during my tenure here as the mayor. We have the opportunity before us today to make a meaningful change to this tremendous facility located in the heart of our community, and in doing so, continue to revitalize East Marshall Avenue. We've taken great steps in recent years in the areas addressing problems and properties, but Teague Park remains a hidden gem, with thousands of residents driving past every day on Marshall Avenue and never knowing the amazing park is just a few feet away. The resolution we're considering tonight continues the investment made to the park in recent years, including playground equipment, renovation of the historic Boy Scout cabin, and of course, our Veterans Memorial Plaza. The proposal would increase visibility, create pedestrian connectivity, and provide an increased employee presence, which I think is essential to Teague Park. By creating a prominent entry to the park on Marshall Avenue, we will provide visibility and access. Visibility is code for safety. When you have visibility, people feel safe. When there's no visibility, people do not feel as safe as they should, even though there may or may not be inherent danger in front of them. It's still the thought of it. By expanding the trail system across Marshall Avenue, we will help facilitate pedestrian and multimodal travel between downtown, south Longview, and the trail system, and we can increase the presence of city employees in and around the park. We also can accomplish all this with minimal cost. Funds raised through our Go Give or Gala events are available. The Longview Economic Development Corporation has pledged one billion dollars to the project, and we have received a letter of intent from Gregg County Judge Bill Stout. To participate in this project, we will most likely present to the commissioner's court for consideration as a part of his upcoming budget. You all know that this project has been on my mind for a while because I really feel like Teague Park is a lost part of our community, and it should be a central portion of our community where we can do things there that promote the community. If we open up the entrance to Teague Park, do we have a slide of what we're looking at? I wouldn't pay attention to the slides. Do we have a slide of that? If you, that's not a really good drawing, but if we open up this entrance to Teague Park, have a kind of a boulevard entrance, much in line with what you have going into Mon Cobb, where you can see into the park from Highway eighty, we will, our plans are to acquire existing buildings in there, have city staff on a permanent basis in there, improve the park itself, and make it a place where people can go and enjoy themselves on a daily basis. I envision there being a lot of things in that park that will keep people in the park on a daily basis, that being the ability to have permanent food trucks there where people can go every day and know they have lunch plans or dinner plans or enjoy it. We will have a city presence at all times, which is another degree of safety which we need, but gives families with children a sense of security as well. So, we have the ability to do that right now. I'd like to see this procured before I finish my term. Therefore, I'm putting it before you as a resolution tonight because we have the funds available, and I see the reason we don't do this with virtually no cost to the citizens of Longview. Any questions about this?
Where is that inlet coming out of Marshall?
Ma'am?
Where is the inlet to Teague Park coming out of?
If you'll look, that's not a really good, we can't really see it well. If you remember where some of the things are on Marshall Avenue, there used to be a place called Jay's Place that has been torn down and demolished. There used to be the Globe Inn that's been torn down and demolished. There's still an insurance building there. It's just right next door to that. It'll, kind of in front of Super One, but down, but it's not exactly where Alpine tees in. It's not where Alpine tees into Highway eighty.
It's not going to affect any of the houses currently there?
No, ma'am. If you'll look at that rendition up there, you can kind of see, and we're going to have the trail extension come where you can go the trail system all the way to the entrance into Teague Park, which also increases our ability to come in and out of the park. But to me, this is a necessity that is a quality of life issue as well as an issue that just brings our city into a better position. I think when that park is open and visible, we will use it more as people in other cities use parks in the middle of downtown for events, and it'll open up the door to additional things being created in the park as we move down the line, much past the time that I will be here. But I think the funds are there, and I think we should consider using those funds for this endeavor. Ms. Carpenter.
And this may be a riley question, but I want that today. How are we going to tie the trails together? Because they're about seven hundred feet apart.
It comes down.
There are sidewalks on both sides of the road, and that crossing is actually placed pretty close to right where the trail will tie in.
Okay.
So, they have sidewalks that connect it to that, the terminus of the car field.
And is there a trail exit on the other end of the park?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Noddy?
Good evening, everyone. Andy, the funds that are available, is that going to be enough to cover the cost, or is that just the initial?
It's going to cover the cost, what we plan to do in this phase. Yes. It will cover our costs of the entrance and some improvements inside the park itself. Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we get a cost breakdown of this?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Who's going, I'd like to know who owns the property to begin with, and we're tearing up the slab in the old insurance building?
No, the old insurance building, we were not able to, we've been trying for three years to obtain the old insurance building, and they refused to sell for whatever reason. We considered eminent domain, and that was not really the way we wanted to go about it because it doesn't allow us to, if you eminent domain, the property, then we cannot land swap or transfer the property to anyone else to adjust our entrance. And so, there's a gentleman that owns property there that we're doing land swaps with because we own property on that side of the road, he owns property. We're swapping land, and we're buying part of his land to bring the entrance in, but we were never able to obtain the insurance building through means it would have been beneficial to the city of Longview.
Well, that's where the road's drawn through right now.
No, it's not drawn through the insurance building.
But there's not the insurance building?
No.
That's the slab that's sitting on the ground right now?
The insurance building is not going to be, we can't go through the insurance building. No.
The road's intention is to be on the slab if there's a.
If there's a discrepancy in the exhibit.
You're coming to the right then.
Through the slab, yes, yes, sir. And the-
Jay's Place is, it used to be called Jay's Place. That was the building that was there. It was an old, whatever you're going to call it.
That's the one with the foundation still on there.
Yes, sir.
The foundation's there, but there's no building there. And that's where it comes to-
And that is obviously part of this vision that I, and I can tell you, we've worked through fifty different iterations on how to get this to the point. The, the reality is, we could pivot and move the entrance to the west, but I'd hate to do that, because the property that we own where the walking trail is going through, if you actually drive by that property, it's actually the prettiest part of that park.
Yeah.
And so I'd hate to move that, I'd hate to move that entrance over. But, you know, obviously, negotiations with property owners, we did, we've not begun any of that with any of the proposed acquisitions without, without council authorization.
We're not, we're not even entertaining the, the Globe Trotter or the old Howard Johnson property.
We, we looked at that at one point, but it, it just didn't line up well.
So.
We, we, and, and I don't think, I don't think we can afford that, to be honest. That was, that was an expensive acquisition, and we don't, I don't think we can afford that. This we can afford, and we can do on, on the, on the, the funds that we have available.
Okay, so is that going to be wide enough to put the street in and, and the trail too, beside it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Excellent idea. I mean, I understand kind of why you pushed it a lot, but it was just reported this week that on May the 18th, the Historical Commission will be dedicating a marker for the Scout Troop 201, which we were involved with the renovation of last year when the governor came up.
Right.
And that's exciting for them and exciting for this Teague Park. Also, for the citizens that don't know it, we have a historic cemetery down in that property, and I have some groups that are willing to come to the table to re-hab, restore it, and bring it up to a usable condition. So I think that's, that's two big pluses, and, and I did see it today, that piece that you're talking about, because you can actually see, if you'll stop and get right, you know, you can see through, and I didn't realize that, so.
And we own property right next to that, so the acquisition is, is minimal cost to us versus going, and, and when we were trying to get the insurance property, then we were going to be able to do a really nice land swap with the Globe Inn area and come straight off Alpine and go straight to the intersection, but it just didn't work out. And there's, and it's not ever going to work out, because they won't sell, and if we force them to sell, we can't, we cannot swap the property on eminent domain. So it does us no good to take it when we really can't use it. So we're just going to work around them, and we're going to have a beautiful entrance, and we're going to have a great adjunct for our city and our citizens to come in and out of that park. And if you'll, so when you have some time, this is, this is for future councils, obviously, but there's a wonderful master plan for that park, and if you just take a look at it, someday, when it's all said and done, it's going to be a real, a real incredible place for our community to enjoy and entertain and eat and gather and all those things. But we got to start somewhere, and, and my, my feelings on this, and when I spoke with Judge Stout and with Lico, it does no good to put money inside the park if you can't see it, people aren't safe, and feel like they can go into it. So if we can't get an entrance off of the, off of Highway 80 and, and open it up, the money you spend inside the park is, is money that's not spent very well. So this has to be done first, and once this is done, hopefully dominoes will fall and things will continue to go inside the park and develop. But if you don't do it, if you don't open it up and make it safe and, and attractive and inviting, then you're just wasting your time and your money inside the park. So that's why we're going to spend the money here and do it the right way. It's going to be an amazing entrance, and it's going to be something we can be very, very proud of as citizens of Longview.
The biggest plus to this, it may sound kind of geeky, but the biggest plus to this is the Vietnam Memorial.
It's, it's something that people don't even know is there.
That's something that people can come through and see.
It is a incredible-
And the two things that sold me on it was the Vietnam Memorial and the walking trail. You know, now, the rest of it, I'm assuming we're going to have enough parking, or we can get down there and park, because there's not going to be enough off of 80, is there?
No, sir. And, and one of the things I want to, I want to clarify is, the 1.3 million dollars that we have on hand gets us down the road on this. We're hoping that through the partnership with the county support, which is not part of that, and through efficiencies, that we can maybe think of some ways to accomplish these projects that are contrary to just being stuck with the expensive way we do things. The gap is how, that is how we're, the gap in funding that's available, that is truly how we're trying to build this as a partnership. I can also tell you too, that I know that, thanks to Laura Hill, which she, she brings like great ideas to you. We're, we're, hopefully, for your consideration, we're going to bring forward a grant in the near future that uses that cash match that's there to, 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 to make up the gap and then some. But I want you to tell you, the, the concept of the project, I believe, is the most important thing for council to either endorse or to not endorse, and then we'll, we'll work our best and work, try and work our magic to close the gap in funding to bring it to reality.
We have about 1.33 million dollars of cash money available through Lico's 1 million, and the Go Giver Gala has 336,000 something dollars still in that fund, which was raised for Teague Park and the entrance of Teague Park, but has not been spent, because we just haven't been able to spend it yet. We, it's in an account, and it's safe and secure, and it's going to be put to that use, because that's what it was raised for, and we're going to use the money the way it was raised, because that's what we don't, we don't use it for things that aren't, it's not raised for. And the county has agreed to help us and do a lot of stuff to, to close our gap in the, in the, it's in the $2 million range to get us where we need to be, and they're going to work with us to close that gap, and I have every confidence that we're going to make that happen. So, yes, Mr. Shepherd.
You know, this is in District 3, and I can remember just as a child growing up here, how popular that park was and the activity that used to go on there, and I also saw where it declined, and some of the, the years of Highway 80 not being the place it should be began to affect that park. And so I completely support all of the work that we're looking to do with it, and applaud you, Mayor, and Mr. McPhee on taking this project on, because it will beautify that area off of 80, heading into South Longview, and so adding another place. I also like, you know, that it has ability for outdoor concerts.
Absolutely.
As well. And so there's so much that we would accomplish, so.
Go by, look at the master plan. If we had a magic wand and a tree that grew money in the backyard, this is what we would love to see happen.
Where's the master plan located?
We have it here at the city, at the city. Just come take a look if you'd like. It's really, it's really amazing, and, and it's just a, it's nothing, it's nothing in concrete. It's just what we would, it'd be nice to see all these things happen, and I think eventually it will happen, because I think we will see the value once this park is opened up, and we'll see the, the benefits that are available out there, and the opportunities that are there that are, that have gone unused in the past. Like, like you said, the amphitheater is out there. Take very, very little to redo that and make that an outdoor venue that, you know, you can really enjoy. So there's a lot, a lot of opportunity out there, and I think, I think the citizens in our community and those who visit our community will benefit from this.
There's a beautiful pond and a great trail, and I know that a lot of nonprofits currently use it for specialized events, but I'm looking forward to seeing the whole community use it more often.
It does have a very beautiful pond and a beautiful walkway. Wonderful, gorgeous place to go, because it's so peaceful.
I still worry about, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I still worry about the area of Teague Park that's behind the military, you know, the, the building there and those houses. Are you going to eminent domain the houses in the next phase of this park, where it's going to expand down into that little community?
No, we have no, we have no plans for eminent domain. That's not, that's, that's the last resort a city takes to do any kind of development. We hope private development will take care of that as the park becomes more and more occupied. And remember this, there are areas outside of our entrance that we don't own that will develop because of the park entrance, that will make the park more inviting and enjoyable where the Globe Inn is and things like that. There are development plans for that as well, that will enhance the, the park itself, and will hopefully spur on development around the corners on all sides of the park. We hope private development does their job, once the city does its job of making the park a place that people want to be. It's, it's pretty good business when you see people going to an area on a consistent basis. People find ways to put businesses up to include those people in their businesses, so it will happen. Just a matter of time. We just wish it would happen all at one time, but it, we don't have that right now. But we got to start somewhere, so I think the entrance is the place to start. Any other questions, counsel? Notting, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion, a second on the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you all for all your hard work. Now, now the work really begins. Thank you. We're now at, as a community interest, we will start, Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mayor. Short and sweet tonight, spring break, so I'm taking that part off. I want all the citizens of Longview to know that we are digging a real road. As of this morning, we are underway. So for everybody who's going to be inconvenienced over the next two years, this, my friends, is progress. Thank you.
Ms. Notting?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take a moment tonight to remember Brandon Johnson. He passed away this morning. This was a man who stood tall, and he fought hard for those things that he believed in. Brandon just demonstrated, I mean, he was a, just a person with impeccable character. I knew Brandon to be a father, a husband, a son, an activist. He was president of the NAACP. He was a true leader who served his community, and he loved his community. He was just the definition of servitude. I'm sitting in this seat this evening, primarily because of Brandon Johnson, and I just want to recognize and thank you, thank him for that. We want to make sure that we remember his family in our thoughts and prayers, and Brandon is truly going to be missed, so. Also, this, these are pictures of Komatsu, and I just want to send a huge shout out to Komatsu for continuing to have growth and development in South Longview. They are an icon and a, a real gem for District 2, so thank you to Komatsu. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Notting. Mr. Wade?
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Notting for recognizing Brandon Johnson. He was a very, very important person to our community, lives in South Longview in District 3. He's been a very good friend of my family for a lot of years. I'd like to send my condolences to his wife and his lovely mother and his two daughters as well. That'll be it.
Thank you. Mr. Neustead?
First, I'd like to also give my condolences to Brandon and his family. I met him, so he did Toastmasters, and I do have to say, he did call me Michael Jordan, because I had 23 uhs or ums or whatever in my talking, and he counts them every time, if y'all know him. He did that, so that's why I try not to do that. But through, through time, also with his notary services and what I do, we used him a lot for his, his services as well, so he will be missed. All right, next item. So the Finance Department was recently recognized with two achievements by the Government Finance Officers Association. So Longview received recognition for, recognition for an outstanding budget and achievement of excellence in finance reporting, so I wanted to say thank you for all the work that y'all do on that. Great job. Also, I had the great privilege to read the proclamation to the Read to Succeed, which is part of Greater Longview United Ways program. They do the book vending machine, and this one was at the Johnson McQueen area, so it was really great to see the kids all excited, and they wrapped the vending machine, which was a first. It was just a really well-done event, and just was happy to be there for that. Also with that, a little bit of embarrassing thing for me, I actually was one of those kids at Johnson McQueen, which was actually Doris McQueen at the time, and this is my second grade yearbook photo, and you can see the hair hasn't changed much, except for it went down.
They look like Falcon. Falcon looks like you.
The, the other odd thing is, my head is the only one blown up in the entire yearbook. So that's just to show I was a standout from the early, early grades there as well. So it, it had definitely a deeper meaning for me when I got there, and I have not been to that school since I went there, and I did not know where the entrance was. It took me a while, but it was great. I loved it. So thank you very much for the Great, Great Longview United Way for their Read to Succeed program, which is vital. And then Lico also got an award. They were the recipient of the 2023 Economic Excellence Recognition from the Texas Economic Development Council. They are one of seventy-two recipients from across the state to receive this recognition. So great work, Lico, and all the stuff you're doing. Also, there is the Strut to Mutt, Strut your Mutt, One Mile Wag Walk. It's 10:00 AM to noon on Saturday, March 23rd, at the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. So you can go to longviewtexas.gov/animals for additional detail, and all proceeds will go to benefit the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, which just had a massive, successful vaccine drive too as well. So thank you for all they do.
Ms. Kimball?
Good evening, everyone. Happy Women's Month. On that note, the Women's Center of East Texas on April 2nd from 5:00 to 6:30 is having a sexual assault panel. Did you know that one in five women and one in twenty men have been sexually assaulted in their lifetime? Come hear from experts who work to protect and serve these survivors. So please mark your calendar, April 2nd, 5:00 to 6:30 at the Longview Community Center. Thank you so much to Natasha Duncan and the East Texas Literacy Council for allowing me to come speak to your ESL and education course teachers about my experience on how ESL impacted my life and the life of my mom, and how it had a direct impact on why we're successful. So thank you so much to those educators and to people that have a heart for serving those that are not like them. March 28th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Women Leading With Love, the Women in Longview Day is happening, so please mark your calendars. Tickets are $30. There will be guest speakers like Anisa Centers, seminar presenters like Melanie Rudovski, and former Councilwoman Ishihara, so please make sure that you put that on your calendar. Join UT Tyler and discover your future. They are having an open house Saturday, March 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You don't have to go too far to go to school. You can go to school right here in your backyard in East Texas, so please make sure that you mark your calendar for Saturday, May 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The Longview Community Ministries, one of our community partners, is in desperate need of donations, particularly that of canned meat items, so if you could please drop off some tuna, peanut butter, monetary donation shampoo, conditioner, or any of these things that help serve the underserved, that would be greatly appreciated. Speaking of torn up roads, George Ritchie is under construction. It will be under construction for a while. Come hear about that and all the other awesome things happening in District 5. So April 2nd at 5:30, we'll be having our town hall, so come ask all the questions. Mr. Archer will be there, all the great people, all the usual suspects, so come with your list of questions, and we're ready to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Pirtle?
Yes, I want to offer my family's condolences and the city's condolences to a family in this town that are great investors I grew up with, and they're very, very good people in this community, and that's the Woolies. Gordon Woolley passed away the other day, and it's, it's going to be a big hit for, for the family and for the, for the town itself. He was a good guy, a great guy, so I know everybody up here just about knew him, and he's going to be very, very, very much missed.
Ms. McPhee?
Love Longview. Keep Longview Beautiful is looking for volunteers for its annual Love Longview Day on serving from 8:00 AM to noon on Saturday, April 6th. Register to volunteer and learn more at www.lovelongview.com. The Walk of Honor, the public is invited to submit nominations for recognition as part of the 2024 Longview's Walk of Honor, which pays tribute to individuals whose achievements have made a significant historical, cultural, or social impact in Longview or beyond. Find more information, submit a nomination by March 31st at longviewtexas.gov/honor. Juneteenth input. Planning for the City of Longview's 2024 Juneteenth Celebration is about to begin. We want your input. If you have ideas to help enhance our community celebration being forward, please let us know using the Juneteenth Celebration Community Input Form, which can be found at longviewtexas.gov/juneteenth. And I want to also mention the passing of Gordon Woolley, what a wonderful man, wonderful friend, wonderful father, wonderful Christian example. He's one of those guys that, as that picture shows, would light up a room when he walks in, just a wonderful human being, and you wonder why the good ones have to be taken away from us. But he was one of those good ones, so rest in peace, my friend. Thank you all so much. Till next time, we are adjourned. God bless you all.